So, item number one, prayer, Councilor Sikala.
Dear God, bless each person present in the room tonight, and help guide our discussions and decision-making with your wisdom. We pray that this meeting is successful, productive, and blessed. Keep us patient and keep us kind in all that we do. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Suzanne, please.
Councilor Sikala.
Here.
Councilor Crisati.
Here.
Councilor Davis.
Here.
Councilor Denny.
Here.
Councilor Falk.
Here.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mueller.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Here.
Councilor Ungary.
Here.
Councilor Arnoni.
Here.
Councilor Bosco.
Here.
There's 11 members present, not or absent.
In case of a fire, we have the doors in the back. Just go around the council chambers, go out back, or the doors to the left. Take your first left, go down the stairs, hook a left, and go out the sliding doors. Item five, meetings of proceedings, meetings, special meeting November 13th, 2017. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Falk, seconded by Councilor Denny. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Any abstentions? 10 in favor, one abstention. Do I have a motion to approve special meeting November 20th, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Falk, seconded by Councilor Crisati. Do I have any discussion on the meetings? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Abstentions? 10, 4, one abstention. Do I have a motion for the regular meeting November 20th, 2017?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Falk, seconded by Councilor Mueller. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Abstention. Item number six, special guest. We have a very special guest. Do I have the proclamation? No, there is. Oh, sorry. Actually, I got it right in front of me. Woo, almost.
Debbie.
If I can ask everyone to please stand and call up Vanessa Cleary, please. Go out front, everyone go right out front.
Okay, this Vanessa Cleary, we have a proclamation honoring Miss Amazing 2017. Vanessa Cleary. Whereas the Miss Amazing pageant was founded almost 10 years ago in Omaha, Nebraska, by then 13-year-old Jordan Summer. Very good. Oh, sorry.
Who competed in pageants and volunteered for Special Olympics. And whereas Miss Amazing is a pageant for girls with disabilities that focus on their abilities. And whereas 32 states, including Connecticut, currently participate in a Miss Amazing pageant. And whereas Vanessa Cleary, a sophomore at Enfield High School, has surpassed physical and mental disorders in order to become an active advocate for young women with disabilities. And whereas Vanessa loved meeting new friends, developing a sisterhood with other members of Miss Amazing, was able to meet girls from different states and connect. And whereas Vanessa showcased her public speaking skills, which she'll showcase in a minute, in a speech that she gave in the talent portion of the competition, resulting in her attainment of the top trophy in the junior teen division for girls ages 13 to 5. And whereas, as the winner of her age division, Vanessa will have the important responsibility to choose a platform to bring awareness to throughout the year of her reign as Miss Amazing Junior Team. Now, therefore, I, Michael Ludwig, the mayor of the town of Enfield, on behalf of the town council, the town administration, the entire community, do hereby honor Vanessa Cleary as the winner of the title of Miss Amazing Junior Team and look forward to witnessing her embodiment of the goal of Miss Amazing Pageant and to reach her full potential. Great job. We're gonna let Vanessa, Vanessa's gonna, she, if you saw one of her skills, she actually spoke at the pageant, we'll let her have the floor.
Okay, Miss Amazing, it's a pageant for girls with disabilities that they can do anything. And I won the junior teen division because I wasn't sure about entering because I never like speaking in front of people because I get really nervous. But Miss Amazing has helped me like endorse my personality and to make me a better person. And I am really so thankful to be here because I have never gotten an honor like this before. And I want to make Enfield proud and you guys proud that I am clean and I will do my part in the world. Thank you.
Very nice, very nice. Miss Amazing, everyone. Good job, good job.
Did all my paperwork for the presentation, worked it at my office.
And again, thank you for coming. We appreciate you coming. And if anyone read the article in the JI, again, she spoke very highly of her classmates in Enfield High. Again, so it shows how well this town interacts with everybody, which is great. So it's a great article, it was in the JI a little while ago. So if you get a chance, read it and again, show all the great things Vanessa's done. So again, as I keep saying, we have great kids in this town. Good job, Vanessa.
Thank you.
Special guest, Joint Facilities Committee. Welcome, Tim Neville.
Director here.
Enfield Board of Education and the chairman of the Board of Education, Walter Crizell, along with deputy mayor Suzak and...
Coming out.
All right, you got it. Councilor Davis.
If I can break all my stuff, sit here.
Which one? Input two, got it. All right. It's still blurry, I think. It'll work, okay.
I got your chair right here, Walter.
Please, when it's time, can you pass this out to the council?
They can write on it. Because we gave them these, right?
Okay, folks, when you're ready, you got the floor.
Hang on just one second.
Just for the record, you guys are getting prepared. This is a joint facilities committee between the Board of Education, the Enfield Town Council, Councilor Davis, deputy mayor Suzak, Mr. Neville, and Mr. Crizell of members of the Board of Education. All set, all yours.
Okay, sorry for the time frame. Greetings, everyone. Donna and I will be presenting an update on the Joint Facilities Committee's work to date. I think we've been meeting for about a year. Sure.
Year and a half.
We were started about the same time that the JFK committee was set up, at the same time we were set up as a joint committee to look at all of the facility needs in the town of Enfield, both Board of Ed and town needs. Basically, this is a status report, okay? If you guys go through it and find a, look for some neat things here, we didn't do all that. We're trying to get this stuff out to you because we think it's important to get it out at this point. And you'll hear some of the reasons for that as we go along. We've given you hard copies and digital copies will be available to you. We'll have them send them out to them, particularly the spreadsheets. Okay, although we're gonna look at the spreadsheets in the presentation, it's gonna take a while. This is the first cut for you guys, and I think it's gonna take a while really to go through the... When you start to get into it, you'll see the vast amount of data that we've had to collect over the last year and a half. It's just huge. And I think it's gonna take some additional study and some additional, I think, presentations for you as we give you status reports over the next few months. You stole my thunder in introducing the committee. The only person that's not here is Randy, and he's at all of our meetings. I just don't think he can make it tonight. If you notice that we've had a six positions on the committee, and we have some comments and some recommendations on that. It's not enough. We've always had five. We've never really been able to get that second elected to be there the whole time. So we're gonna be coming forward to you and making a request that at the very least we expand the committee and probably expand the charge as well. The charge, do you guys have this on the screen here?
Next slide.
Okay, okay. Basically, the charge was to review the town of Enfield and the Board of Ed facility needs. We were asked to prioritize the facility improvements once we assess those needs, and then finally develop a schedule and funding plan for the implementation of the needed facility improvements. We basically divided it into tasks, and this is tasked for the whole committee, not just this one update. We wanted to gather and analyze all the available data and prioritize needs. And we say available data because not all the data we need is available. We don't have it in a form that is easily accessible, and we need to do something about that. The second task was to verify cost estimates, propose a schedule for planning and construction phases, propose a short and long-term funding plan to implement needed facilities improvements, and finally prepare a final report to the town council and Board of Ed with recommendations and conclusions. One of the things that we decided early on is that as we saw recommendations that were just obvious to us, we're gonna put them down, give them to you. It's really up to you to make some decisions on those. But we didn't want them to get lost in the process because this is going to be a longish kind of a process. And some of them, I think, are just quite clear. Update on the committee work to date. We took the SBS report that I think all of you had copies of, and I think it was 2015, Donna?
Yes.
The date of that. And we analyzed that report, all the data that was in that report, and any other available report that we had about all Enfield facilities. We developed a very, very detailed spreadsheet, which, thanks to Walter, we got color-coded for you and printed. If you spread it out, it's probably gonna go from corner to corner. It's got that much data on it. You got the small version. We have some other ones to show you. I could've printed it eight and a half by 11, and you would've been with a microscope. So the spreadsheet, the neat area is sorted by priority, maintenance systems, subsystems, et cetera. You'll see it across the top. And we tried to break it down. What we wanted to do is create something that we could sort in multiple ways and then analyze as we went along. We ended up identifying the building envelope as the maintenance system to address first. We figured if we don't button it up first, doing anything inside is not gonna be worth our time or money. So we looked at the flashing, the roofing, and all those kinds of things, and tried to come up with some ideas, some initial ideas on how to approach it. Formed a draft analysis of the building envelope itself and those needs, and specifically focused on the roof and the flashing. The town was good enough to contract, have a roofing contractor do a detailed analysis of the Hazle Memorial's roof, and we have that report. If you guys don't have that, we can get copies to you. It gave us, we took one step there, and it gave us an idea of what was involved in that. It was really, really kind of interesting to see how involved and how many roofs are buildings at. You know, every addition has a different roof, has a different timeframe for when it was done. We had all of the buildings that had additions put on back in 2003, I think it was, 2004, and they're all coming due for renewal at the same time. That's part of the problem. We need to figure a plan out to stagger those kinds of things. In essence, we were able to deal with this thing here, but only, we, this is only encompasses the first two tasks that we had on that previous slide. There's still a lot of work to do. Turn it over to Donna here to deal with. There's a sheet on the back of your packet, the two sheets. One is, kind of lays out the key that came from the SBS report, and it will help you interpret the Excel spreadsheets that we gave you. So Donna, take it over.
Well, the first thing we did as a committee is we requested the full Excel spreadsheet of the SBS report, which you're looking at one sheet right there. That report is at least 10 to 20 sheets of detail of every little thing that needs to be done at our buildings. The first thing we did as a committee is we sat down and we said, "Look, this is priorities 1, 2, and 3." And we looked at them and we said, "Well, this is great, but if something's a vacant building, if it has a priority 1, in our eyes, it was not a priority 1." It was something that needed to be down the list a little bit further. So we went through the whole list of, there was probably 1,000 different items, and we re-itemized them to be an A1 if it was a high-priority roof or an envelope, a 2A, which would be a high-priority 2, and a 3A, which again would be high priority. We also pulled out the, 1PC would be, that would be the performance contract. Those are being completed right now as we speak. And then we did 1Bs, 1C, 2Cs, and so on and so forth. But then we decided that we had vacant buildings, so those would become whatever priority they were with a 1V for vacant. And then as we looked down through the buildings, we had buildings that were probably potentially vacant, which means that we need to look at our town facilities and look at how we deliver our product. We have, my price example is down, we have the Buildings and Grounds that's down on Prospect Street. We have the Jablonsky Center, which for me, I feel that we need to look at, can we better deliver our DPW at one facility and then put the facility that we have down on Prospect Street as part of what could go into the transit center and put out for RFP. Then after we did this exercise of going through and according to our secondary prioritizing, we looked at types, and these are other spreadsheets that could be available to you, that we organized them by roof, by windows, by HVAC, by electric, by plumbing, masonry, bathrooms, building renovation, sprinklers, and ADA, any of the categories that were in the original SBS report. And then when that didn't seem to really pan out to give us a solution to this, we started looking at, you know, accessibility, exterior shell, grounds, HVAC, interior shells, plumbing, and statutory. And then next slide. That's the one that you've been given, is this large spreadsheet that really, when you look at it, these have all been summarized, your plumbing, your roofs, everything. In the SBS report, they are itemized out. Some things are three and four items for each category.
We also have 33 facilities.
Right, we were given, we had 33 facilities, and since then, we've acquired a couple more. We've acquired The Strand. We've acquired the property on South River Street. So we are always in the process of acquiring properties as well that we haven't even given, you know, a thought as to how they would be packaged and repurposed and made probably better use of than they are right now. So another thing that we did is we actually went and reviewed every single drawing that was available to us because we do not have in the town hall anywhere where there is a consolidation of when were improvements done to a building. We don't know when the last time the roof was done. We have no ease of finding this information. I mean, and we've looked at the drawings that were at Fermi. We looked at ones that were brought here. We have a lot of stuff that's been kept so that it's accessible, but we don't know how to access it conveniently, which is really a difficult process when you're trying to gather data. I mean, when we looked at the library, we found, you know, three bid packages for alternates for re-roofing the library. Yet in 2005, I don't know if the roof was ever done. We never found the building permits nor anything like that. So we need to get some sort of connectivity between what we start to do, what we look at doing, when we finish it, and plan for the next time that that's going to have to be done again. So that was our analysis approach. I guess, yeah.
Hang on. This is what happens when you break your computer.
Yeah.
And we had to borrow one to do this, I apologize. Big time we broke it, I'll tell ya. $1,300 worth of breaking.
I guess I...
I can take this one.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, as we were going along, we talked about making recommendations along the way, and we started to come up with questions about, we have a lot of buildings. How many buildings does a town really need and maintain? And I think that's a question. It's a huge question. As Donna was saying, in seeking out the records of the previous projects, we discovered there is no central town council or Board of Ed data warehouse for facility records, either paper or digital. Doesn't exist. Okay, we're piecing it together, literally. We found plans, really good plans for a school that we never built, okay, over there. I mean, and I think in order to come up with anything, we need to come up with a process and people who are responsible to put that plan together. There's also no one person responsible for getting and analyzing facilities data. A lot of people have their hands on it. A lot of people have some of the records, some of it's in public works, some of it's in Fermi and storage, but there's no organized way to do it. And we're not blaming, we're not throwing stones. We're just saying it doesn't exist and it needs to in order for us to come up with a plan to deal with this. Until this is undertaken, it's just, I don't know how you would put together a comprehensive plan with scheduled planning and construction phases. And that's one of the tasks that we were given as a committee to do. The other thing is that in the SBS report, there were no real safety needs identified. And particularly with the tone of the times here with what's going on, we have specific requirements from the state that we have to include safety items in the construction, in remodeling and so on. And we need to add that as we go along to this report. And so we set up a category for those kinds of things. We came with, the funding plan needs to address this differently than what we've done in the past. And I think you folks have been doing that as you've looked at the roads, you've looked at buying vehicles, you're kind of planning along the way. You're not letting it get out of date or so bad that it becomes very difficult to maintain it or it becomes a safety issue. And I think we used to pay as we go, which I'd love to be able to do in my own house, but we need to change that. And I think that's something that we need to look at, and we're recommending that you folks look at that. We looked at the Hazle Memorial Roof Repair Analysis. And I think we also looked at roofs as, they're all but the same. They're not, okay? And they're not done at the same time. And we talked about why it took five years to do the JFK roofs. It's because you have a limited window of time that you can have some of the materials in the building when kids are out of the building. And the other thing is we looked at roofs and saying, do we always have to do the same type of roof that we did when the building was built in '69? Or are there better, less expensive roofs that we can do that are more efficient and that might last even longer? And I think that's, those are questions that have to be asked by somebody and probably a roofing consultant. We need a reliable, long-range plan so that we don't get in this position again. Right now, if you guys have read the report, we have a lot of things that are due within the next five years, or all priority 1 items. We can't do them all in that time. There's not enough, you know, money to do that. And we have to come up with a way to fix that, however we deal with it. And we'll talk about referenda down the road. And then we have to come up with a plan so that they're staggered and that the public understands that in New England, if you have a roof, it lasts 20 years, okay? And then you have to do something with it. If you have a boiler, it lasts 50 years. And it's not because of lack of maintenance, it's because it's just the end of its useful life. So we have to come up with that kind of a plan to deal with that. The other question we came up with, and we mentioned it before, there's no one person responsible for this, okay? And we are saying, do we need a town facility manager who would collect and analyze the data, set up this whole process for all long- and short-term maintenance projects, and who would annually report recommendations to the town council and Board of Ed? And that happens in other towns. In fact, one of the people that was on our committee brought up these kinds of things, and that they did that regularly in their town. In fact, they had a roofing analysis that was, a computer program that was kept by a roofing contractor, and they kept all their details there and would send them the data about what needed to be done, what grants were available, and so on. So that's the kind of thinking that, we're not telling you what to do, but we're, it's a question we're raising. Would that be an efficient way to deal with it and maybe save us some money down the road? Our recommendations. We think that the town council, the Board of Ed have to determine how many buildings they really need in the next five years, okay? We're not telling you what buildings. We're just saying, do we need all of the buildings that we've had? I know you've seen us close schools and things like that. But I think we have 33 or 35, 36, whatever, facilities in town. I think as a body, you have to sit down and look at that and say, in five years, in 10 years, do we need all of these buildings? And are we responsible for the maintenance of all of these buildings if we're gonna keep them? Because it's a significant cost. We need to determine which facilities are no longer needed and that they be repurposed or put on the market to be sold and possibly added back to the grant list. That's your call, folks. We're just, if they're not being used, you know, it doesn't make sense to us that they just sit there. We think that the town council and Board of Ed should investigate strategies to make more efficient use of current facilities. I think you've done this in the past in terms of consolidating departments and moving them out of rental facilities and so on. We're saying, take another look at that. There may be some savings in that. And I think finally, review the committee's charge and increase the size of the Joint Facilities Committee. I think we need more people on there to do this job. We need to pull in some specialty people, I think, that could help us out, possibly get some people who can do some of the analysis. The town manager was gracious enough to get us the roofing contractor to take a look there. But I think in order to get the rest of the data we need, we need to change that. And I think we should change the charge and increase the charge of the committee. You've got some hard-working people who spend a great deal of time digging through the dusty files to get this stuff, and we like what we're doing, and we want to bring it back to you so that we can move on it. We're recommending as a group to create a positions of facilities manager whose job responsibilities include collecting, organizing, and systematizing all town facility data, systematizing and implementing regular facility maintenance service intervals to ensure sustainability of all facility mechanical systems. We picked this up partly from the Enfield High project. I think you guys had a presentation from the building committee about the process. Everything's digitized, including all of the service maintenance, all the service schedules and so on, so that it's a no-brainer, what you have to do just to maintain the sustainability of the building. But I think we have to get to that because this is part of the infrastructure, it's part of the fabric of the town, it's a, it's just the substance of the town. And we need to be good caretakers of that, of those buildings. We need to make budget recommendations on immediate and long-term facility needs to the council. We're suggesting one year, five year, 10 year, could be other intervals. But when we do that, we educate the public as to what the needs are, and I think that's always a good thing to do. We need to propose, this facilities manager, we're proposing funding including incentive grants for annual budget process. Grants are available. We can get some money from the state sometimes. Those should come in, you shouldn't have to do that work, is our sense. And we think that if we had somebody in this position, they could do that. You want to pick up this?
Sure.
This is Donna's favorite.
Well, you know, after I looked at this, I said, we need an actual plan. And for me, the only way you have a plan is if you go to referendum. You put money in CIP, it's up for grabs. If something else comes down the pike, that may be a little bit more... If something else comes down the pike, that may be a little bit more important. So I looked at that and I pulled out roofs, HVAC, big-ticket electrical, windows and doors, which would include security component, be the vestibules. Because we started this committee, they disbanded the securities committee. That work came to us without any information as to what we need to do. I think there's some interior stuff we need to do. But the most important thing for me was the vestibules. And I thought that if we bundled those all up, we went out to referendum for $25 million that it could be budgeted annually in $5 million intervals, similar to what we do with the roads. And we could do the roof, the electrical, over 600, windows, doors, security components, which is really critical. I know we spent a lot of time when we first went out to referendum explaining to everybody that the security component was in this referendum. But it unfortunately did not pass. And the second recommendation was that we use things that are non-referendum required, projects under $600,000. That we somehow, for grounds accessibility, masonry, interior shell, electrical and plumbing, under $600,000. That we develop a plan that's similar to the vehicle replacement CIP plan that we see now, that has a constant dollar value in the budget. And we try to, you know, address some of these on a long-term basis, whether we do them in-house or we package them and we bid them out and we supervise them. These are things that all truly, they need to be done, just like we do the roads and we worry about, you know, resurfacing and keeping our roads. We need to keep our buildings to a point where they're not accumulating work that needs to be addressed. So for us, I think that was, that was our big thing. And I thought that maybe this is something that the community might be willing to embrace. The last referendum that went out for this was $41 million. Maybe was a little bit high. But 25 and looking at how we've pulled out the data, I think this committee felt really comfortable. So.
Just to add on, just, that's great. We kept looking at stuff as we went through the SBS report. And there's a lot of small stuff that you say, you're not going to, you're not going to put that in a referendum. It's, you know, it's like replacing the, some of the masonry around the edge of the building or repointing it or fixing some things that are actually safety items where the stuff is cracked or even some landscaping work. It doesn't belong there. So we were suggesting, we're speculating. We weren't suggesting or recommending it. We're sitting down saying, possibly it may be worth your while to, one, bid it out and group it together and things that can be done this summertime and bid it out. The other thing would be to hire some extra folks, train them to do what you need to do. And, you know, whether it be on a short time or a long-term basis, and have crews of those people do these things. And to have a checklist and just get them off the list. Some of these things have been there for 10 years. And I think you have to, how do we get it done? So we're not telling you what to do. We're just saying, there may be some economies in here if we can do that and get some of this small stuff done. Because that's what a lot of people end up calling you guys about and saying, hey, this thing's wrong. We know we want to fix it. We just don't have the wherewithal. So it's a thing that we'd like you guys to play around with to come up with some variety of ideas. Because there's lots of ways to get this stuff done. Next steps, okay? As we said before, we want to expand the committee charge and membership. We think that has to be done. Secondly, and this is critical, I think, you know, Donna and I were arguing about this on the phone this afternoon. But we have to do something about building sustain, a sustainability plan that has to be done. Otherwise, we're going to lose the buildings. We have to figure out a way to get these things done along the way. So we have to start developing that ASAP. Almost before we spend the money, we have to say, how are we going to do this? How are we going to keep these buildings up? Because this is our resource, it's a community resource. And then what we want to do is work with you guys. And we're pressing you to do this, to get approval for getting of facility recommendations included in next year's, in this upcoming year's fiscal year 18, 19 budget process. We have to start. And I think the report was done 2015, 2018, in a couple of weeks. It's going to get away from us. And so we're kind of pushing you. But we need to do something with it. And we're willing to stay with you and help you. Now it's your turn. Questions?
Thank you very much, first of all. Good job, guys. I'll open up the questions.
All right, let's go home. That's it.
Yeah, it's a lot to digest, you know?
It is.
Give us a little time to go through all this.
You know, we actually-
First time for most people have seen it tonight, so.
Right, it is. And it's the first time you've seen it in this format. I know when we first started it and we first started looking at the smaller version of this, it was like, you know, all of a sudden, things start falling out a little bit better as to what was performance contract, why it was performance contract. How did, you know, how did the people who developed really those referendums that went together? And you understand that, you know, we've actually, we've pulled out JFK and we've pulled out Fermi. And I think that there's a sense for me that we can deliver our product, which is helping our people in Enfield, better from one large building. I'm not a professional. I'm willing to listen to, this is why you should provide it in 10 small buildings. I'm not sure. For me, I always feel it's better if I train people to go to one spot. If somebody's not there that doesn't do that, if they're down the hall, then I get a much better flow of how I've helped the people in Enfield. So I, you know, I know we've started moving stuff to Fermi. I know recreation could move to Fermi. We've started using it for the gymnasium, for the senior center. I think that there's, you know, we have to be open to looking at stuff. But we need, at this point, I think, some professional help. And we need to expand our committee to enclose people who are, oh, look at this on a daily basis and are willing to give their skills to us.
Counselor Secola.
A couple of questions and comments. The recommendations, it looks like it was slide 14 about the referendum. Was that a recommendation that was made prior to the JFK referendum failing? Or did you make that after?
We actually met, what, in August? And then with the referendum and people going out and stumping for the referendum, we didn't. And I will tell you, that's something that really was sitting on my mind. And I didn't really discuss it. And we discussed it at our last meeting. And that was on just the 30th.
And so is the Joint Facilities Committee going to be taking in JFK as part of their charge?
I think it should. That's my opinion. But it's up to the council to decide that.
And if that happens, will your recommendations change, given the fact that JFK needs work? And it's not in your recommendations?
We haven't, we haven't, literally, it's, we just had the election.
Right, and I'm not sure-
We just haven't done that. In terms of, is it all facility issues? Yes, it is. Does it rightly belong in this thing? Yes. We haven't, we haven't made that decision yet. Okay. And I think it'd be wrong for me to speculate at this point.
Right, but I'm saying JFK had their own committee. That committee by charge is no longer in existence any longer. So I would assume that if things needed to be done at JFK, it would be assumed that it would go under the Joint Facilities Committee.
Right, just like security went under.
Correct.
I guess for me, what, they have a term, it's called value engineering. I think that, you know, what's been done by the pre-ref for JFK needs to be value engineered. It needs to have some construction managers come in and do it with us. Because getting, me getting it in emails isn't doing that anybody any good. I said, I think about this a lot because the condition of our buildings is the window to how everybody looks at the town of Enfield. I think JFK is a very large building. I still think it should be a standalone referendum in my eyes.
I tend to agree.
I weigh back and forth. If we could get that $25 million, do we go building by building and do windows, vestibules, roofs? Or do we go in and we front-load it? We do all the roofs all at once? We get our grants in line for our windows and our vestibules for security? Those are questions that I don't know. I mean, we even took a quantum leap of saying, you know, we know there's built-up roofs. Nobody does built-up roofs anymore. Nobody does ballasted roofs anymore. We just want a membrane roofing system. That will make it, you know, easier to do in the long run. So this is a huge undertaking that this committee has been looking at for a long time.
So when is it that the committee's looking to expand their memberships? Because I'm pretty sure you, between the people who've talked tonight, said a half a dozen times you need more members.
Tomorrow.
Well, we're going to Board of Ed and presenting next week to the 12th. And then we're going to have a leadership meeting between Board of Ed and Town Council, which is how the other committee, I believe, was formed. And I'm hoping that this is January. For me, my fear is always this. I've been through referendums where you put, you know, two on the ballot, three on the ballot. And people think that it's, you know, they're choosing one or the other. And I don't, I felt that I never wanted to see the rest of the facilities pitted against JFK. I felt that that was a priority. I think everybody did. That's why it had a pre-ref. That's why, you know, we brought it to referendum very quickly. You know, that's just me speaking. I mean, I'm sure everybody up here has a different opinion on this. I mean, we could do as they did with the elementary schools and you could combine it with JFK. And JFK would be a full building, renovate to new. And you would have this other portion that would be roofs, securities and boilers and large electrical.
Okay, I guess one last comment. I appreciate all of the work because this is a ton of information. I just would like, as a general note, that if the committee is going to be expanded or reworked or however you want to term it, that we sit down and figure out how the committees are going, the committee members are going to be comprised. It's not going to be the committee that decides. It's going to be the council. Thanks.
Counselor Falk, then Counselor Denny.
Just a thought, you were talking about doing all the roofs at the same time, which I think would be a mistake. You really need to stagger them. Because if you do them all at the same time, they all wear out at the same time. And then you're-
Well, that's the reason we're in the problem right now.
Twenty-five years from now.
Right.
Things need to be staggered so they don't all expire at the same time. Just a thought, based on past experience.
The problem is, is we're on the, what you might say, the 25-year plan, no matter what.
Uh-huh. Just stagger them. Get 25 buildings, one a year. That way, they don't all-
Well, that's what we, well-
They don't all go at the same time. You had put together this analysis approach and the committee then gave additional priority designations, 1A, 1B, 1C and all that. And I was wondering how that tied into this because I don't see any of those designations on the sheet.
There's another spreadsheet that has all those in it.
Yes. We can get that to you.
We'll get that to you.
It's like 10 pages like that.
All right. No, it was just a question because I didn't see a correlation here. And I was just curious as to how you rated these things.
I think Tim might be able to bring you up a sample of what it looked like.
This one?
Yeah, I think that's it.
Call the control room.
There we go, yeah.
The priority one, right?
Kids control my remote. I don't know how to do it.
There, there we go. Right, and it also brings everything out into the columns of its discipline.
Just keep on going, okay? But we'll bring you back to the priorities here.
Right.
So you're going to get that to us then?
Well, yeah, we'll just send it to you.
Okay, no problem.
And just remember, this is all done, you know, in our spare time. And we did not prioritize Fermi nor JFK.
Oh, I appreciate everything you've done. It's a lot of work. You know, it's a thankless job. And you've done a wonderful job at it. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Denny.
Well, let's look back into the past. I want to bring that up because I think you're not going to do a referendum for a lot of buildings and pit one against the other. In the past, I've been in Enfield my whole life. We had a building that sat out here, was on a referendum three times with a whole bunch of other referendum money. And nobody wanted to spend that total amount of, and at the time, I can't remember exactly, but let's say $5 million. Fix Higgins School, do this, do that, do this. And it failed. And we ended up tearing that beautiful-looking building down. So my recommendation is, if you're going to go to a referendum over $600,000, that you do it with the worst facility and fix that first and move on. Because if you start lumping all of these things together, the taxpayers out there in Enfield are going to tell you, we're not, we're not buying it. Thank you.
I guess, I just want a clarification because that's one of the ways, you know, you know, and your brain thinks about eight million ways to do it. So what you're asking is that we pick, say, Hazerville Memorial, which would be the next school that would go for renovation. Right, after JFK, after JFK, right? And we would say, say we would go out for a $6 million referendum. And then the next year, we would go out for another $5 million referendum. And then the next year, we would go out with another $4 million referendum. I guess my idea of lumping it with, to 25 million would be like the roads. That we would do it and we would put, year one is going to be, if we decide it's going to be, one building at a time, be roofs, security, everything that was over the referendum limit, that would all be done that first year. Second year would be crandall. Because I think the H schools are a little bit newer in there. Their, their construction, and they might be in a little bit better condition as far as their priority ratings. So we would do that. But for me, the first thing we need to do is the town needs to really look at its facilities. We have a lot of real estate. And we have little departments running here and little departments running there.
I didn't realize we owned a barn behind that.
Yeah. Yeah, neither did I until I ran into some conservation people. And they were looking at the barn. I'm like, really? So, I mean, there's all these things, you know? We have just secured more property for the transit, you know, oriented district. So all these things, we have to be cognizant of them. And somebody has to worry about them on a daily basis. And it really has to be their only concern. So I don't know personally. I'm not an expert. I don't know if any of us up here know, you know, is delivery in 10 buildings better or is delivery in one building better? But we need to keep our programs for our citizens and we need to deliver them the best way that we can.
We have two, we have two big problems. We have two big problems, and Counselor Falk was right. You have to stagger it. Okay, the problem is, is that all those schools come do it at the same time. They do now. Within five years, I think we have nine roofs. I could be wrong, but I think it's nine roofs that have to be done. And so how do we fix that problem and then stagger it in the long term, 25 years out? Okay? And then get us a plan so that we don't ever get in this position again? Okay? And that's what we have to do. And in terms of doing the roofs, I'd love your idea, Ed, but it, you know, we have too many things to get done and to focus on one building. We have to seal that envelope up so it doesn't leak. You know, and we have to take care of the electrical or the boilers before there's a problem, too. So there's a lot on the table. So, you know, and I think that's maybe why it's been put off, because it's a lot of money. But I think we have to come up with two plans. Okay? One is to fix the immediate priority one issues, and the second one is to, in a staggered way, but then to plan outward. How do we stay away from this issue again?
You know, having a multiple amount of roofs is not a problem if you have a roofing fund.
That's true.
You know, that's, I think that's the crux of the matter, is we have no way of accumulating the $1.2 million per roof that's required. And maybe that's another approach that this council can look into, is how do you set money aside that is used for the roofs? And not up for grabs when you're at, say, year 17, and the roof still looks good, and you have some other project that really needs the money, or you don't want to raise the mill rate? I mean, these are all things we have to be concerned about.
Any other questions? First of all, thank you all, the four of you, and Mr. Daigle as well, for, this is a great amount of work, and I agree, you know, to your point of staggering. I think, if you go back to some recent history, when we started the road referendum, and we actually, if I remember correctly, we purchased a software program where we actually, I think what you folks are saying, the same thing we should be doing for the facilities, where we said, here's Counselor Denny's suggestion. Here are the worst. So if the roof in this place is going to fall down, it's got to be done. That goes first. And then the plan is, per the, you know, if you have a facilities manager with the software or the hardware we want to use, I think you can actually sell that to people.
I'd agree.
I think, I can just say personally, I hear from people, people are willing to invest money if they understand what we're doing. So I think that's why, if you're right, to your recommendations, we have to have some sort of, again, maybe there's priorities when we get into a very difficult budget year, some other things are going to have to kind of take a backseat, and this is something that has to be a priority, because it also, it's to the long term, to your point, where we're going to generate hopefully some revenue by unloading some real estate we no longer need. We have to bring in alternative revenue other than taxes. This is one way we can do it, where we're creating jobs, and we're actually putting things out to bid, where we're actually bringing in revenue from the private sector, which is what we need on those buildings. And then we consolidate, we become more efficient, and hopefully we deliver better service to our taxpayers. So, I mean, there is a sort of, I appreciate your goal on this, and I agree we should expand this. 100% agree with you, and I, hopefully, we can do it the first meeting in January would be the goal. You know, and I also agree with bringing JFK underneath and getting some folks who are, to your point, facility managers, to get that cost, a reasonable cost, to get that building going. And I also think, you know, to your other suggestion, on a facilities manager, so would that facilities manager obviously control or understanding the buildings we have, but would that person have some sort of, lack better word, real estate experience? Where they could help us? Do we need this building anymore?
I wouldn't think they would have real estate, but I would think that they would have, and Joe might be able to answer that question better than me, they would be more skilled in the building engineers, engineering components.
So if we're looking, so at the end of this committee, if we're looking to package a bunch of buildings in an RFP, at that point, would we look to maybe have a real estate agent to help us in the RFP process?
Yeah.
So that'd be separate than what your suggestion?
But taking care of our buildings as a facilities person, they wouldn't be responsible for the sale or repurposing of a building.
I agree, it's part of long-term revenue projections that we're going to have to, we're going to have to do.
There's also grants available that, you know, your facilities person would be more in tune to getting. I know this past budget, some of the Eversource money kind of dried up in the budget, but when Steve was on, he showed us how the town of Simsbury was able to change out its boiler system, and a good portion of it was done through grants. So, you know, to be able to grant right and do things like that is also a good, you know, item that a facilities person could bring to the table.
I think also, looking at some ways, you're talking about saving money. We have a big school with flat roofs and a big open field, and there's nothing solar in that
Right.
situation. You know, I'm putting solar on my roof, and my bill's going down. And I would think that the town's bill could go down as well. I mean, if you present all of these pieces together to people, people are reasonable. If you're looking at it that way and say, hey, this is the plan, I can expect this to happen here, and I can expect that our infrastructure is going to be taken care of, and there's some savings in it, and possibly some savings at the end of it, whether we repurpose buildings or sell them. It's a whole thing.
Well, in my opinion, this is the most important committee we have, in my opinion, joint between Board Education and the Town Council. This is the most important committee, because it talks to everything we're going to be talking about with the budget.
Right.
It's short-term answers and long-term solutions. There's no other way around it anymore. So I agree, when we get to that point, I support expanding this committee and continue as a joint between the Town Council and Board Education. So I look forward to having that discussion, hopefully, first meeting in January. Again, thank you. I know this is a ton of work, and this is a lot getting to the detail that you folks put in here. So thank you very much on behalf of the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walter.
For the record, Merry Christmas everyone.
Merry Christmas. We move to item seven, public communications. Again, we ask folks, we don't have anyone have to sign up. I actually read our policies that pending. We have, each person has five minutes to speak. At around four and a half minutes, I'll give you a kind of a friendly heads up. But again, we appreciate you stating your name and your address before you come up. And again, keep personalities out of your comments. We welcome everyone who speaks before the council. Today is the December 4 meeting, and anyone who'd like to speak before the Town Council. Steve? I'll start your time now.
Steve Cogtala, 2 South River Street. And I would like to get some clarification on a statement that was made, and also comment on the statement by the town manager, and it's reflected in the meeting minutes of 11:20. It's under Town Manager Report and Communications. I believe it's the last sentence in that, under that topic. And the term "item" being referenced by the town manager are the taxes that were waived on 33 North River Street property recently acquired by the town of Enfield from the Community Development Corporation. The minutes state, he noted, "That was an item that neither he nor the town attorney were asked to address as part of the conditions of sale, and the council were notified that in accepting the agreement, they would be effectively waiving the taxes for 33 North River Street." Now, this is money that is owed to the town of Enfield. I would think that if he wasn't asked to address this item, it would be incumbent of him to initiate an inquiry regarding this item. The second part of the statement would suggest this item was in fact discussed. Otherwise, how would it have gotten into the agreement? So if it wasn't discussed by the town manager or town attorney, then by who? I'd like to know who negotiated that purchase agreement. And I would further ask, was council provided with an actual dollar amount of the taxes being waived? And if so, what was that amount? My research indicates over $17,000 of taxes were waived on this purchase agreement to this corporation. And I would just like to know if you, those of you that did vote for this, in fact, do that. Another question I had asked at the previous meeting that was never answered, either at the meeting or by email. Why wasn't the remaining outstanding taxes owed by this corporation, ECDC? Remaining outstanding taxes owed by this corporation, approximately $8,000, collected by the town. October 30 meeting minutes state, three entities that were owed money by this corporation were paid off by the town, namely, the IRS, Connecticut Department of Labor, and Fallon Law Office. Why wasn't the town included in this list to collect the taxes due from the $91, $8,500 balance remaining? You had the money in your hand, and you handed it back to the corporation. And I think it's a fair question to ask, because at the time of the real estate transaction, and currently, there's a lien on their property for ECDC property by the town for back taxes. So I don't understand, you know, why that occurred. Regarding the Connecticut Department of Labor, was the $22,732 not paid by the town as stipulated in the purchase agreement? I ask this question because the state, just last week on 11:27, filed a lien on ECDC properties at an amount of $23,307. It's up $575 in interest and penalties, now the responsibility of the town. And my final question, and I've asked this one before, too. Will the town manager be required to step down from the executive director position of ECDC to slowly focus on his duties as manager for the town of Enfield? Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Oh, and I have that lien, if anybody would like to see it. I'll enter it into the record.
Thank you, Steve. Would anyone else like to speak before the council tonight? Sir? Name and address for the record. Welcome.
Certainly. Hi. My name is Herbert Hoyn. I've been, I've addressed the council one other previous time. I live over on 12 Brainerd Road. Last time I was here was about maybe seven or eight months ago, and I complained about the amount of speeders that we had going down the road. Since then, we've had about a half a dozen accidents, two very serious. I've had one accident occur right next to my house, where I had to hold the DUI, the gentleman who was a DUI until the police got there. I offered to have my driveway used by the Enfield Police Department. They are more than welcome. I'm a retired police officer, as is my wife. They are more than welcome to use my driveway if they would wish to, for speeding, or as a speed trap. I have not gotten anywhere. I've not gotten any response from the police department. Every officer that I've spoken to has said it's a great idea, they love the idea of doing that, but to no avail. I have not seen, every night around 11 o'clock, I have two motorcyclists that, if anybody's ever had a Harley-Davidson open, with throttle open completely up, going down the street. They know exactly how that sounds. The only problem is, they decide to use the eastbound and westbound lanes both at the same time, going down the road. At the same time, we have, usually it's usually the drag strip, early, late in the evening, around 12:30, 1 o'clock in the morning. The other day, I sat out there, just in a chair on my front steps. I was just curious, you know, just as a police officer, as a retired police officer, how many violations I'd be able to write in the course of maybe an hour or so? I counted 34 in the course of one hour, sitting on my front steps in the afternoon. I don't know what has to be done, but at this point right now, I've gone so far as start collecting a petition of everybody who lives on Brainerd Road to come forth in front of the council again, and to the chief of police, and to see what can be done about it. Again, there's been a couple of serious accidents. There's been a telephone taken, a telephone pole's been taken out. I have a son who's deaf. There are other people with handicapped children on the street. Sooner or later, a tragedy is going to occur. And again, I was here a few months ago, and I haven't seen anything happen yet. I would love if something could be done about this. Okay? And anything I can do to help, I'd be more than happy to. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak for the council? Sir?
Paul De Gregorio, 15 W Lane. Hey, people at home, come to your TV sets. I want you to hear this. I want you to hear what your Enfield Police is all about. Last year, I sat, went to the Enfield Police Department with my attorney from Roman McGuigan, probably one of the powerful law firms in the state of Connecticut. And we went there because I initiated an investigation into Officer Montos, Calatano, and Edmonds, and another investigation into Montos, Bancroft, and Nolan. So last year, me and my attorney went to the police department. They asked, we were there for about an hour and a half, answering the questions. I didn't shy away from anything, answered the questions. During this meeting, I remember an incident that occurred, where I live at 59 Sharon Lane with my girlfriend, right near St. Martha's. My neighbor, I see him making a beeline for my property, and like, and his name is Scott Dixon. So I go running out the door, and I tell this man, "Don't you even freaking step one foot on my freaking property. Don't even try, buddy." He goes just like this. He says, "I got a gun, and if I see your dog come on my property, Molly, I'm going to shoot and kill it." And I said, Denny said to me, "If I see you driving your truck, I'm calling the cops." I said, "What did you just say to me?" "If I see you driving your truck, I'm calling the cops." "The Enfield Police told me to watch your house, and if you see Paul driving his truck, call the police immediately." Really? Really? At this point, I can't tell you what I said, because obviously, all I can say is, I said to him, "Come on the property, narc. Come on the property, rat. Come on the property, you spyless clown."
Sir.
Okay, hold on.
Again, comments?
Hold on, hold on. You see this?
Keeping professional.
You see this right here? This is a Veterans, this is a Department of Veterans Affairs card. They don't hand these out to anybody.
That's fine.
I served my country. I got confronted by a neighbor who I'd never freaking met, and he said, the Enfield Police said, "Okay, let me finish speaking, sir. Let me finish speaking. Maybe you'd like it if people come to your house and have a neighbor confront you." He's telling me that he's spying on my house.
I understand your motivation.
And my family.
Okay.
And my kids.
I'm just asking you to be, just keep it calm.
Know what that's like? Do you understand what that's like, sir? You know, and the thing is, can you imagine if I was Jewish? Well, anyway, so I bring this up to Lieutenant Pedemonte and Captain Curtis. And Lieutenant Pedemonte says, "I just want to say right off the bat, Mr. De Gregorio, we are not taking this, I am not taking your complaint about him threatening to shoot to kill your dog. I'm only dealing with the internal affairs thing." Right? So I'm thinking to myself, boy, that's funny, because if the roles were reversed, with Scott Dixon, he'd turn around and say, "Hey, Christopher Perikilos, hey, get Shine Bloom on the phone. Tell him to come out of retirement, so he can take a whack at De Gregorio again." You know? So what bothers me is, is, what bothers me is, is that I've got a gentleman telling me he's, that he's spying on me and my family. Can you imagine that? Now, get this. If they're recruiting people on Sharon Lane, what are the odds that they're recruiting people on W Lane where I used to live? Pretty damn good, I would say. And then if they're recruiting people, the Enfield Police are recruiting people on W Lane, what are the odds that they're recruiting people here that work at the Enfield Town Hall? Which brings me to October 21st, 2015, when I came here to get an FOI complaint, and the person makes an anonymous phone call and calls the cops and says that I was, that I was doing something wrong, and I didn't do anything. They made it all up. They're part of this in crowd. Can you imagine that? Is that what our police department has come to? Because let me say this again, to the people at home, do you see this? Do you see this? This was a Department of Veterans Affairs card. Don't hand these out to anybody. I served my country. So why are we worried about Osama bin Laden and Khalid Sheikh Mohammed and Ammar Al-Awlaki and all these international terrorists? Because I'm not. Because we've got plenty of domestic terrorists right here in my own backyard. It's called the Enfield Police Department. It's called the people that work here at the Enfield Town Hall. Like, like the people that work in zoning, because that's where the phone call came from. They called Carl Sparazza. They didn't call 911 or the 7636400 number. They called Sparazza directly. What is this world coming to, sir?
Yeah, 30 seconds.
Yeah, what is this coming to here? What's going on? And the other thing is, we all know this is tied to Officer Red Thierin, because I'm involved with his ex-wife. Everybody knows what's going on here. Not only has the Enfield Police harassed me in the state of Connecticut, people, I was stationed on an army base, Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri. And they harassed me in Fort Leonard Wood, called up my commander. Guess who? I couldn't believe it. The airman comes up to my room, and he says
Sir, you have 10 seconds.
All right, I'll come back up, because I get to come back again. I'd be fine.
You have to talk about something different if you're going to come back up.
Well, we're going to talk about how I've been harassed. I mean, this is no different than the Harvey Weinstein incidents that's going on. These guys are harassing me.
Sir, your time's up. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the council? You have one more chance. If you, again, I don't, I don't hear, I don't hear any names. I don't want you to be calm. No, I'm not threatening you. I'm just telling you
Sounds like you're threatening me, because my lawyer says I'm entitled to a safe and secure place. Then when I come here, then I don't need to be belittled or
I'm not bullying you. I'm just saying you've got to be respectful.
Or say anything. I'm very respectful, sir. But the thing is, I served my country.
I have no question.
Okay. So again, so only, Paul De Gregorio, 15 W Lane, not only have I been harassed in the in the state of Connecticut, but when I was stationed on the army base, Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri, I was there as an Air Force contingency package, I was there as engineering, trained with the Navy Seabees and the Marines. An airman comes up to my room, he says, "Hey, De Gregorio, you gotta get down to Commander's Office, there's an emergency phone call." "Really? My mom? What's going on?" Now, I don't know if any of you people served your country, but when you go down to Commander's Office, you don't go down in your plain clothes, you gotta put on your BDUs, you gotta go... "Sir," the airman puts his arm, "you gotta..." You know, when you go in there, you just, "Hey, Colonel, what's up?" It don't work like that. So when I get down there, my first shirt's there with my Master Sergeant, and they said, "We got a phone call." I go, "Is it my mom?" They go, "No." "We've got the Enfield Police on the line, we got an Officer Sparazza." I'm like, "What? What? Officer Sparazza? What the hell?" So, and so I talked to him on the phone, and, you know, I explained to him, you know, they asked me, "Well, what's going on? Did you get arrested for, over Christmas holiday?" I said, "No, I didn't get arrested." "Well, what's going on?" I said, "Well, I saw an Enfield Police Officer assault a woman, and I filed an affidavit." They said, "Well, that's all it is?" I said, "Yeah." "Well, they made it sound like that, you were, you were under criminal investigation. We've already told the commander to start paperwork to have you decidedly discharged." I said, "What?" They go, "Oh, my God." "You should have seen it." So now I gotta go in front of my commander, because I'm out in training, and I gotta come in and explain to my commander in my first shirt, what that, why is Sparazza calling me up and harassing me in Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri, which is how many, how many? So now, there, when I meet with my commander in my first shirt, I tell him I want to file a federal harassment charges against Sparazza, because he called me up trying to, trying to get me in trouble, and, you know, from one state to another state, that's federal now. And my commander, he's saying, "You know what? My first shirt's telling me, don't do that. You don't want to shed light on yourself, you're just starting out your career." And, but my commander's saying, "You know what? I understand where De Gregorio's coming from, man. This guy's being harassed by these cops here in Enfield, Connecticut. They made it sound like..." Because all they said to my commander was, or my first shirt, or the Master Sergeant, "Oh, I'm, Mr., yeah, De Gregorio's part of a criminal investigation, I need to speak with him." So they're assuming that I'm under, I ain't under, please. And I told them, well, you know, they just, they love the character assassinating in Enfield, Connecticut, you know, that's, that's how these people operate. So the thing is, I could have filed a federal harassment charge and I should have, because we wouldn't have Sparazza today, we'd have a different kind of outfit. The police department that we have now, we've got guys that are so freaking out of control. Officer Calentano beat the living daylights out of my freaking partner and sent her to the hospital. She almost went into cardiac arrest, because this guy, Scott Dixon, and his family freaking assaulted me and my friends at my house, and nobody done nothing about it. Now, I'm a contractor, I listen to this lady, Donna, talk about roofs and all of that. If people want to file a complaint against me, you can go right to the Department of Consumer Protection. I've had people coming out of woodwork coming after me. Well, I want to file a complaint, I'm filing a complaint saying nothing happening to, nothing being done for me, because this is what they said about my, about my Internal Affairs. Here it is right here, listen to this crack. I get the letter in February this year, February this year, listen to this. "The complaint that you filed against Officer Calentano, Officer Bancroft, Officer Edmonds, Officer Montos, and Officer Nolan has been closed as because it's unfounded." All my witnesses are saying, they saw everything. Calentano beat your woman.
You gotta stop using names, sir, okay?
He did.
You gotta stop using names.
What are you talking about? He did.
All right, well, you gotta stop using names.
I was right there. What do you mean, Officer Calentano?
I just said you gotta stop using names.
What names? What do you mean, so I'm just saying, an Enfield Police Officer?
There you go, that's what you can say, yes.
Really? Really? Well, how about this? Scott Caven says, Scott Caven says that he feels that he's...
I'm giving you one last chance.
Well, let me, stop pointing at me, why are you pointing at me? I'm not your son.
If you keep using people's names, I'm gonna close public hearings right now.
Yeah, I'm not your son, don't point your finger at me, man.
You have a minute left.
Yeah, no problem.
Get your point across.
Hey, listen, all I know is, I don't do anything to anybody, I ain't got time for this stuff, you know what I'm saying? I don't have any time for this, but to know that people are working as spies to get me, me and my family, and to know that Ingleett, Sandra Davis, Christopher Rizzo...
Yeah, names, I told you names.
You know what I'm saying?
Public Communications is closed, sir, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I ask you to kindly please...
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for your time. Item 8, Public Communications and Petitions. Anyone? All set?
Council of Communications?
Deputy Mayor Susak.
I just want to give out a thank you to the Police Department for their luncheon that they had on Friday. It was a little delayed from Thanksgiving, it was a, it was a nice time, and I'm hoping next year we have no delay, and we have a full room for the...
The Fire Department or the Police Department?
Fire Department. I know, sorry. Thank you, Ed, for listening. The Fire Department. So it was a turkey dinner, and it was great to have someone cook for you.
Counselor Bosco.
I just want to say the torchlight parade and carol sing was great, and I gotta thank Santa, because she told my granddaughter she wasn't on the naughty list, so it was a good time.
Counselors to call.
Thank you. My kids didn't want to go, so I was home. Um, that my kids didn't want to go?
Yeah.
I was too. If we could, through the mayor to the town manager, if we can follow up on the gentleman's request regarding Brainerd Road and the speeding with the police, or whoever we need to talk to to get some sort of meeting, that'd be great.
Counselor Crissati.
Okay, to the town manager, through the mayor, there's a handicapped couple on 22 Pleasant Street. Is there a way that we could put up a handicap parking sign in front of their residence? She's on oxygen, and most of the time she can't get parking like right in front. I'm just wondering if we could get a handicap parking in that vicinity, if possible. And I do have a couple of other things that I want to mention. This is for Allied Rehabilitation Center. Just want to say that, that they took part in a Connecticut Holiday Classic in East Haven, Connecticut, and I just want to give a shout out to our Enfield Stars athletes commended for their skills in the two-day tournament, and several of the athletes and their partners received medals and ribbons, and it was quite a, quite a great weekend. And also, coming up at Allied Rehab Centers, having a ribbon-cutting ceremony for their new transportation canopy entrance, December 12th, and I think it'd be a nice thing to go. And we also have Rachel's Challenge, December 16th. Free pancake breakfast that I do want to mention at St. Pat's Church from 8:30 to 10:30. Santa and Buddy Elf will be in attendance, and for children for pictures and small gifts.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Susak.
I have actually two things. First thing, I want to remind people that December 1st was the last day for leaf bags, but we will have one more leaf pickup, and that'll be on 12/8, and you should have them in your brown tipper barrels. And when we're done doing that, please, everybody, put your tipper barrels away, because we get a lot of complaints here that people leave their tipper barrels out, you know, too long. And now I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move items B-1 through B-3, B-5 through B-8, B-11, and B-13, E, F, G, to miscellaneous, and proceed to vote.
Second. Seconded by Counselor Falk. Any discussion on the move to suspend the rules and move the miscellaneous items mentioned? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All opposed? 11 in favor, zero against? All set? Deputy Mayor Susak? All set?
I'm all set.
Counselor Denny?
Yeah, just one more, a public announcement. Reeds Across America, the trucks will be here again, 9:30 on the 13th, on a Wednesday, Parkman School. If you're interested, it's a great thing to come to, make sure you're there. And I don't think it's too late to still purchase a wreath, is it?
It is.
You can do it online, still do it online, they're only $15. Thank you.
They extended it, but I can't remember what the extension was.
That's all.
What's the time at Parkman?
9:30 in the morning.
9:30. Anyone else? Counselor Crissati, go ahead.
Okay, last one, I promise. On December 13th, the Commission on Aging is gonna be having a meeting at the Senior Center, and a proposal to be discussed will be the senior home repair for handicapped, widowed women, elderly, and people with limited financial resources. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else, any other communications? I just have a couple, if anyone's done. I just want to recognize Matthew Bungard, he got his Eagle Scout recognition at the Troop 2000. Again, I'm just gonna comment the folks in that troop, and those young boys are very articulate, so, again, our, our young kids are doing a great job. Again, so I congratulate Matthew, his family, who are very nice, his grandparents and his parents. Also want to congratulate the fallen folks, I had the pleasure of peeling carrots at the Methodist Church on Thanksgiving morning, and I did not screw it up, so that just tells you I do have some other skills. But I really want to thank, you know, the fallen folks. Jess, Val, Don, Alan, Wendy, Steve, Lorraine, Bob, Scott, and Donna, again, and Destiny. All folks who volunteer their time and, again, served free, free, free meals for folks on Thanksgiving Day. Seventy-eight people were able to actually have a meal, which is great. So again, just another example of how great our community is. Also want to thank our, to Council, Councilman Bosco, our Kid Mayor, Mayor Jalen Asim, who did a great job last night flicking the switch, so the light, the tree went on. So again, again, I will try to, I will try to find ways of getting Jalen any opportunity she can as the Kid Mayor, and also we saw Vanessa tonight as our Miss Amazing. Again, folks, we've got some great kids in this town, so obviously we have some great parents. So you do the combination, we have a pretty good community. You know, and I think the only thing I'll always say in closing, you know, again, I think if you drive around town, I know we had the torchlight writing last night, but man, the folks are doing a great job decorating their homes, and in any way they feel, which is great for this holiday season, you don't have to go, you don't have to go up to Springfield, it's just to drive around Enfield and you'll see some great decorations. Another example of a great town that we have. And again, I want to apologize for the earlier public communications, that will not happen again. Item 9, Town Manager. Town Manager Report.
Thank you, sir. You have included in the packet my project and activities report. More than happy to update council on any questions or concerns that they might have regarding the information contained in that report.
Any questions for the town manager? Sorry, Counselors to call us first.
Thank you. This isn't exactly on your P A R, but can we get the link working so, for the Town Council soon, so I can much easelier see the P A R, please?
Sure, I will be more than happy to make sure that we get that link updated.
Thanks.
Sure.
Counselor Arnone.
Yeah, ETV has a couple of public announcements they're filming for different areas in the town. Can, can we get a little sample of those two when they're finished?
Sure, be more than happy to make those available.
Deputy Mayor to call, it's Deputy Mayor Susak, sorry. It's the S Z, it throws me off.
It is. Maybe it's a premonition.
Sorry, Donna.
Okay, I guess for me, on the par, can we have the social services one be in a similar format to everybody else's, where instead of it being in paragraph format, they're more in bullet format? Because, I mean, we all have a lot of reading to do, and sometimes we just skim down through, you know, each event that they're doing, and they had the paragraph of what they do at the Senior Center. I was like, okay, I need it, I need it bullet, bulletin format. And I guess also I had a citizen call me about, I guess there's that ticker tape that goes along the bottom of, now, they were under the impression that this was not working?
That is correct.
Okay, do we have a timeframe when it will be working? Because I know in leadership, we talked about putting different things in that ticker tape.
I will have to have a conversation with Paul Russell and Comey about that particular function. I don't believe that we are in a position to support that function with the system as it currently exists.
Okay.
We're in that goofy transition between half our stuff is analog and half our stuff is digital, and so that's one of the consequences of being in that platform, but I'm more than happy to follow up in discussion with them both.
Okay, so it's something, it's a transition as we move from analog to digital that's, that's bogging us down. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else have any questions for the town manager?
Brian, I have one quick thing. I know we've heard a little bit about the budget, and, you know, I just want to give folks to prepare that we will be enrolling sort of where we're at in January. You know, I'm just, I want to get ahead of it a little bit. We'll be having some joint meetings with the board and then, of course, with council as well. We are, I'm gonna be, we're currently in a deficit situation with the $2.3 million cut we just got from the state, so want to give folks a heads up, in January, we'll be rolling out a meeting, whether it be at the council or a special meeting, where we'll allow staff to kind of show folks where we're at in some of the things that we're gonna have to deal with as we move forward and go forward, as we deal with on a go-forward basis. You heard the Facilities Committee tonight as part of some of the long-term goals. So again, I want to give folks a heads up that we're gonna need everyone in the public, we're gonna need their ideas, we're gonna need our town staff, our school staff, we're gonna need everyone involved. Again, the rainy day is here, we're not being over dramatic, but it is here, and, again, I know folks criticize me because I, I'm in tune with what's going on with the state, but I have to be when it's almost 50% of our budget when it comes to revenue, and when they're, when that, part of that revenue's at risk, and we just saw that there's $2 million in, behind already in our revenue projections for next year, next fiscal year. These are the realities that we have to deal with as a community, and we want to make sure that everyone's aware, we're having plenty of public meetings, we'll be having a presentation, and we're gonna need everyone to come to the table with ideas. And I want to get ahead of it now, and we hope folks will be hearing, we'll be certainly showing this in January when we start our, the new year. So again, I want to just kind of, you know, kind of...
Sure, just in, yeah, just in brief summary to some of our previous conversations and your comments, Mr. Mayor, the town is currently estimated to be about $3.9 million in a deficit position as a result of our adopted budget, which did have some planned deficit spending, but now in addition to the state cut, so we're at about $3.9 million in deficit, which is what we're gonna need to address sometime between January and the end of the year. How we go about doing that will be a policy decision of council, but the Finance Director and I are currently putting together some information to present to council. At this point, we're kind of targeting in that second week, that second meeting in January, but we'll be responsive to the leadership meeting on the 20th, so that we can kind of give you a quick snapshot of where we are, looking back and projecting into the future, and so you can use this information as your platform to help make some of the policy decisions that we as staff are going to need with respect to service reductions, to deficit, excuse me, not deficit, but fund balance, commitment, and future planning. So we are, we are planning to have a nice presentation ready for you all in January to consider.
Part, just, sorry, part of that presentation, can we just make sure that the, I mean, I know, I think it was sent, but a copy of the policy for the public that the council adopted a few years ago, and what percentage of the overall budget that the council, as a policy, said should be in fund balance?
Sure.
So just folks understand why we have the fund balance that we have.
Sorry, Counselor Arnone.
No, that's okay, it's fund balance, since fund balance is on the, on the tongue right now, that's an important thing now that the state seems to be watching us on. They seem to be watching all the towns throughout the whole state of Connecticut on our fund balance, and our fund balance is, is up there, whether it's in the right spot, whether our fund balance needs to be in capital improvements, I think that's something we're gonna have to look at, but we can't continue to keep that kind of money in our, in our fund to make it look like we're not, and that's the unfortunate part of it, we're not a rich town, but if people look at your bank account for a loan, you know, they're gonna say, oh, you know what, you're not gonna get a low-interest loan with 100 grand in the bank, so that concerns me, so I think we need to adjust that also accordingly and, and start looking at the future of how the state looks at us. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions for the town manager? Thank you, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Falk?
Just one thing, I was at the CCM meeting last week, and there was an attorney there, a lawyer for the, that represents towns and labor cases, and he, he was talking about the same subject, and, you know, when it, when it comes to reductions or adjustments, all affected parties need to be part of that discussion, which would include staff, the unions, non-union, taxpayers, council, Board of Ed, all the, all the people associated with the budget, actually, that these cuts would affect. They all need to be part of that discussion, so we hope that as we go forward, that in fact, they are part of that discussion, and it wouldn't even hurt to ask them if they have ideas on how we might save some money.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. Item nine, town, excuse me, item 10, town attorney report.
No report, but I'm available for communications.
Anyone have any questions or communication for the town attorney? I'll just say, I guess I got an email from some folks from the Blair Manor who I know didn't turn out the way we wanted to, who are very appreciative of everything you did, and your staff. So again, this is directly to you, I know the council, various folks in the council did things, but again, they were very complimentary to what you and your staff did for them.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, it was our pleasure, and again, it was at the guidance and the request of the council, and we did everything that, you know, we were able to do, and it's unfortunate it turned out the way it did, but I thank the council for their support and giving us the go-ahead to use our resources in our office to try to help the citizens of the town. Thank you, though.
Item 11, report to special committees of the council, any reports to the, any special committees? None, we'll move to item 12, old business. None on page one. If we go down to page two, items 15, 16, and 17, we like to remove those from the table and actually get them off our agenda. Do I have a motion to remove items 15, 16, and 17?
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Suzak, seconded by councillor Muller. And all those in favor, please raise your hand, show of hands. 10 in favor, zero against. Um, any?
Because I didn't give a second.
Sorry. Any discussion on the items of why? I can actually speak for, I mean, I think as folks know, items 15, 16, and 17, that committee will be dissolving shortly, and so there's no need to keep it on our agenda, to clear up a little space on our agenda. Any discussions or question from anybody? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Four.
Four.
Councillor Davis is out. Councillor Denny.
Four.
Councillor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Muller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Councillor Ungary.
Four.
Councillor Arnone.
Four.
Councillor Bosco.
Four.
There's 10 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
I don't, I don't, we don't have any of them, items 18 down to 29. Item B, appointments, town manager. It seems that he has stepped out, so I don't think we have any on town manager.
No.
Item 13, new business. Consent agenda, no action. Item B, town council appointments. Do we have any appointments on 1, 2, 3, or 4? I don't think we do. Item C, nothing of C and D. Item E, I think we're leaving on the, on the table, no, no need to bring it out. Okay, item, item 14, items for discussion, no consent agenda, but I think we have, again, items B, B1, B2, B3, that was moved to miscellaneous. No action on item B4. Items B5, 6, 7, and 8 have been moved to miscellaneous. No action on B9 or 10. B11 has been moved to miscellaneous, no action on B12. Item B13, moved to miscellaneous. No actions on B14, 15, or 16 at this time. So again, we moved to item C and D, which again, I don't think we have any. And now we move to, again, item E, F, and G have been moved to miscellaneous. Item H, I don't believe we have anything to discuss at this time unless anyone, so that will remain on the table. Item I, again, I don't think we have anything to discuss.
They can't because they haven't been moved to miscellaneous.
Yep, they haven't been moved to miscellaneous. So now item 15, miscellaneous.
Yep.
Trying to be a little, a little smoother here. All right, so our first appointment.
Which was just moved to miscellaneous.
Yes. So first would be item B1, which is the Commission on Aging Term of Office, and I apologize upfront to this individual, Muriel Capuccio, and I apologize if I ruin that name, but again, expired for 0101, 2018. Do we have a nomination on the floor?
Sure, I would like to nominate Muriel Capucci.
You're better than I, we have a nomination. Second, nomination by councillor Arnon, seconded by deputy mayor Suzak. Any, any discussion on that nomination? Do we have a motion to close nominations?
So move.
Second.
Move, notion to close nominations by councillor Falk, seconded by councillor Denny, all those, show of hands. We have 11 in favor and zero against closing nomination. Any further discussion on the appointment? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Secala.
I'm still trying to find the page. Four.
Councillor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Davis. Oh, she's still out, I'm sorry. Councillor Denny.
Muriel Capucci.
Councillor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Muller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Muriel Capucci.
Councillor Ungary.
Four.
Councillor Arnone.
Four.
Councillor Bosco.
Four.
There's 10 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item B2, Commission on Aging Term of Office, Term of Office of Tim Slade, expired 11 1, 2018. Do I have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Tim Slade for, um...
Nomination by deputy mayor Suzak, seconded by councillor Muller. Any discussion on the nominations? Hearing none, a motion to close nominations.
So move.
Councillor Denny, seconded by councillor Falk. Any discussion on closing nomination? Hearing none, show of hands, closing the nominations. 11 in favor, zero against. Any discussion on a nomination? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Secala.
Four.
Councillor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Davis.
Four.
Councillor Denny.
Timothy Slade.
Councillor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Muller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Tim Slade.
Councillor Ungary.
Four.
Councillor Arnone.
Four.
Councillor Bosco.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item B3, Commission on Aging Term of Office of Kathleen Talarida, expired 11 1, 2018. Do I have a nomination?
Nomination.
Nomination by councillor Denny?
Kathleen Talarida.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councillor Crisati. Any discussion on a nomination? Hearing none, do I have a motion to close nomination? Closed by councillor Secala, seconded by councillor Crisati. Any discussion on closing nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor? We have 11 against, no, none against, 11 in favor, zero against, sorry about that. Any discussion on a nomination? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Secala.
Kathleen Talarida.
Councillor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Davis.
Four.
Councillor Denny.
Kathleen Talarida.
Councillor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Muller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Kathleen Talarida.
Councillor Ungary.
Four.
Councillor Arnone.
Four.
Councillor Bosco.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item B5, planning and zoning, term of office of Richard Suzak, expired 12 31, 12 31 2017. Do I have an appointment?
Richard Suzak?
Nomination by councillor Muller.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Falk. Any discussion on a nomination? Hearing none, do I have a motion to close nominations?
So move.
Motion by councillor Falk, seconded by councillor Muller. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor closing nominations, raise your hand. All those opposed, any abstentions? We have 11 in favor, zero against. Any discussion on a nomination? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Secala.
Richard Suzak.
Councillor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Davis.
Four.
Councillor Denny.
Richard Suzak.
Councillor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Muller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Abstain.
Councillor Ungary.
Four.
Councillor Arnone.
Four.
Councillor Bosco.
Four.
There's 10 in favor, none against, and one abstention.
Planning and zoning, item B6, planning and zoning commission, term of office of Charles Ladd, expires on 12 31 2017. Do I have a nomination? Councillor Crisati.
I'd like to nominate Charles Ladd.
Got a motion, seconded by councillor Denny. Any discussion on the nomination?
Let's close nominations.
Motion to close by deputy mayor Suzak, seconded by councillor Falk. Any discussion on closing nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor? 11 against, 11 four, zero against for closing nominations? Any discussion on a nomination? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Secala.
Charlie Ladd.
Councillor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Davis.
Four.
Councillor Denny.
Charles Ladd.
Councillor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Muller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Charles Ladd.
Councillor Ungary.
Four.
Councillor Arnone.
Four.
Councillor Bosco.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item B7, planning and zoning commission alternate, term of office of Sarah Gruber, expires 12 31 17. Do I have a nomination? Nomination by councillor Secala.
Sarah Gruber.
Nomination Sarah Gruber, seconded by councillor Crisati. Any other nominations?
Move, motion to close.
Motion by councillor Falk to close, seconded by councillor Muller. Any discussion on closing nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor? All opposed, abstentions, 11 four, zero against closing nomination. Any discussion on a nomination? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Secala.
Sarah Gruber.
Councillor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Davis.
Four.
Councillor Denny.
Sarah Gruber.
Councillor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Muller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Sarah Gruber.
Councillor Ungary.
Four.
Councillor Arnone.
Four.
Councillor Bosco.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item B8, loan review committee, term of office of Jennifer, and I apologize, Jennifer Cassalone, expires 12 31 2017. Do I have a nomination? Nomination by councillor Secala.
Jennifer Cassalone.
Seconded by councillor Arnon. Any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Motion by councillor Falk to close, seconded by councillor Muller. Any discussion on closing nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor? 11 four, zero against closing nominations? Any discussion on a nomination? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Secala.
Jen Cassalone.
Councillor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Davis.
Four.
Councillor Denny.
Jennifer Cassalone.
Councillor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Muller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Jennifer Cassalone.
Councillor Ungary.
Four.
Councillor Arnone. Councillor Bosco.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item B11, library board of trustees, term of office of Deborah Fiori, expires 12 31 17. Do I have a nomination? Councillor Crisati.
Deborah Fiori.
Second, seconded by councillor Arnon. Do I have a motion, any other?
Motion to close.
By councillor Falk, seconded by deputy mayor Suzak. Any discussion on closing nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor? Show of hands. Those opposed, abstentions, 11 four, zero against closing nomination. Any discussion on a nomination? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Secala.
Deb Fiori.
Councillor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Davis.
Four.
Councillor Denny.
Deborah Fiori.
Councillor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Muller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Deborah Fiori.
Councillor Ungary.
Four.
Councillor Arnone.
Four.
Councillor Bosco.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item, item B13, library board of trustees, term of office of Yvonne Wolenberg, expires 12 31 2017. Do I have a nomination?
Nominate Yvonne Wolenberg.
Nomination by councillor Arnon, seconded by councillor Denny. Any other nominations?
Move to close.
Move to close by councillor Falk, seconded by deputy mayor Suzak. Any discussion on closing nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, any abstentions? 11 four, zero against. Any discussion on a nomination? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Secala.
Yvonne Wolenberg.
Councillor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Davis.
Four.
Councillor Denny.
Yvonne Wolenberg.
Councillor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Muller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Yvonne Wolenberg.
Councillor Ungary.
Four.
Councillor Arnone.
Four.
Councillor Bosco.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Trying to go, item, move to item E, discussion resolution. We don't have to take the motion, make it off, right? We can just, we don't have to take it, right? Motion resolution, resolution referring to the planning and zoning commission proposed conveyance of town-owned land, whereas the town of Enfield owns two parcels of land identified as Lot 2 and Lot 7 on Assessor's Map 25, and whereas the town council has determined that there is no public need for the parcels, and whereas the only, the owner of the adjoining property at 878 Enfield Street is interested in acquiring Lot 2 in its entirety and approximately 2,100 square feet of Lot 7, as shown on Attachment A, and whereas the town council must refer the proposed transaction to the planning and zoning commission for a report in conformance with the requirements of Connecticut General Statute 8-24, now, now therefore be it resolved that the planning, that the proposed conveyance of the two lots is hereby referred to the planning and zoning commission for a report in conformance with the requirements of Connecticut General Statute 824.
So move.
Second. Move by councillor Falk, seconded by councillor Arnon. Any discussion on a motion?
Sure, I'll say some, some discussion. Yeah, this, this particular piece of property is the gateway to Thompsonville, and it's one of the, that corner, the Brayhill building itself is, is, you know, really necessary, I think, to be, to finally get some movement on and make that gateway what it should be of moving into Thompsonville. So I'm really, I'm going to support this, and I just can't wait to see that property developed in a, in a way that is, you know, fitting with the area and improving that area. It's kind of a eyesore to be always going to see that building as long as I can remember now.
The last piece in the four.
Yeah, the last piece of the puzzle in the corner, exactly.[1334.83] Yeah, the last piece of the puzzle in the corner, exactly, yeah. So I'll be supporting it, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Susak.
Although I think it's a great idea, I won't be supporting this because I believe that we need to have, I think, more flexible zoning in the Thompsonville district that allows for the use and reuse of properties when they have existing conditions that might not meet every, every item on the checklist that we need. And sometimes lot coverage is one of those things that we truly need to look at when we look at Thompsonville. This is not a situation that, for me, they say, well, there's no hardship. Well, no, there isn't a hardship, but there is a, the owner of the property, the hardship is, is actually created by the fact that we have a different world than we had 200 years ago. So for me, it's not that I don't think this is a good plan, I think we as a town need to do this a better way.
Councillor Enone?
Yeah, if everybody's done. I, I can't agree with Donna more, other than supporting this. And I think that's where this council, especially with the, the new faces on this council, have to realize too, that our planning, our zoning laws need to be looked at, especially